All right, it's nine thirty. We're gonna get started on the work session here in preparation for the ten o'clock council meeting. First on the agenda, approval of minutes. Any que-- no changes? I don't know. Any questions? All right, next is approved monthly bills, March twenty twenty-three bills. Any questions? All right, public hearings, resolution twenty-three zero eight seven, approved request for special event retail liquor license for the Alabama Center for the Arts Foundation for Sterling Through the Arts on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three from Witt LLC. Doing business is JW Steakhouse.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero eight eight, approved request for special event retail liquor license by Witt LLC for Decatur Morgan Foundation Dragon Boat Race on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero eight nine, approved request for special event retail liquor license by Witt LLC for Deney and Blanc on June tenth, twenty twenty-three.
No changes.
All right, any questions? All right, resolutions. Resolution twenty-three zero nine zero, approved purchase of additional garbage carts for solid waste department. Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine one, accept CLG Alabama Historical Commission grant for Old State Bank Historic Structures Report.
No changes unless the council has questions.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine two, approve Lord, Aic, and Sergeant to perform historic structure report on Old State Bank.
No changes, and we did modify that to the seventy thousand five hundred.
Okay.
To get all of the different.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine four, approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four CDBG action plan.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine four, accept National Park Services grant for African-American and women's historic context statement.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine five, approve revised Aldott City Agreement lighting project, SR twenty US thirty-one.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine six, approve budget amendment for Dyke and Amphitheater at Founder's Park Outdoor Lighting and Sound System.
No changes.
Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine seven, award bid number twenty-three zero one-one R for concrete labor and equipment to SJ and L LLC. Okay, any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine eight, award bid number twenty-three zero one-three R for alternative daily cover material at Lamfield to LSC. Any questions? Resolution twenty-three zero nine nine, approve unit or is that supposed to be unit? Did we? I don't know.
Unit D.
Okay. Fiber, Southern Light Fiber Optic Expansion.
There's no change.
All right, any questions? Resolution twenty-three one hundred, approve memorandum of understanding with Decatur Utilities regarding cost sharing for Church Street Water Line Relocation.
There's no change.
All right, resolution twenty-three one zero one, approve Ingalls Harbor LLC project proposal, project development agreement, and ground lease and start process.
Yeah, it's all up. I'm gonna share this. This notice was given Friday, ten days ago, the seventh. It's a public meeting whereby anybody that has input, had already given input either in writing, certainly can be present. The purpose of that is to hear all the different ideas on that. So that's, it's a public meeting pursuant to section ninety-four point oh one of the state constitution.
All right, any questions?
And I'll share the other stuff.
Sure. Any questions? Resolution twenty-three one oh two, approve proposal of upgrade to above-ground fuel storage tank at golf course. Any questions? All right, ordinance is first reading, ordinance twenty-three four five five two, approve FY twenty-four ad valorem tax levy. Any questions? Ordinance twenty-three four five five three, declare surplus city land to be used for proposed Ingalls Harbor LLC proposed project.
Yeah, that's obviously part of the process. We'd like to consider a double vote, but that's all we'll do is ask, give the consideration of that.
All right, and then ordinance twenty-three four five five four, approve general obligation warrant series twenty twenty-three.
Uh, the details of the transactions that occurred on Thursday are now added, and the all-in interest rate came out to three point eight six percent.
All right, and that was for thirty-five million at twenty-five year or thirty-year?
Twenty-five year.
Okay. And deferred interest for four years?
Correct.
Sure. Good news.
Yeah, we were expecting higher than that, but good news that it came in less, so.
All right, any questions? All right, we will get started at ten o'clock.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. John Evans, Executive Pastor at LifePoint Church will lead us in our invocation and pledge.
All right, let us pray. Father, thank you for just allowing the opportunity to be here today. God, you told us in your word that where much is given, much is expected, and to whom much is entrusted, there's greater demand. So this morning, as we enter into a time of making decisions and presiding over a city, a city that we love, we ask that you would guide us, that you would give wisdom, and God, that you would be honored and glorified in the direction of Decatur. And so we trust you with this time. We ask that you, again, would give guidance and leadership, and we thank you for your goodness to us and your mercy. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Evans. Roll call. Here.
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 All right, before we move into the agenda, we do have John signed up for a public comment, Ms. Underwood, and we'll do three minutes, and you can just come to the podium.
Donna Underwood, 12 Tanterhood Avenue, Southwest, Decatur, District One. Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I just have some questions for the council, which I know sometimes you cannot answer, but I'm going to put them forth anyway so that the public, as a citizen, we can maybe get some answers down the road. First of all, I'd like to ask that 3M has been working on the Brookhaven Aquadome property for a while now. They've had monitoring wells out there for a while now. Has the city council or any department in the city received reports from those monitoring wells? And if they have received reports, when will we, the public, know what is in those reports? Okay? Things are being reported to ADAM. Are we getting reports back from ADAM, which is the Alabama Department of Environmental Management? So that's my first question. My second question would be, 3M is obviously coming up with a plan for all that property, and is the city council aware of what those tentative plans are? And is the city council going to be involved in what those plans are? Because I think that's very important. That property is contaminated. We know that. Unfortunately, we did not know that ahead of time, but now we know that, and something needs to be done, maybe more than just planting grass and saying, "Okay, it's done." And then my last comment would be, we hire consultants all the time to look at various things for our city, to projects, to different things. Why don't we have a consultant, or maybe we do, and me as a citizen is just not aware, why don't we have a consultant that is working with the city to monitor this PFAS problem? Okay? It's probably going to be expensive. It's not going to be, you know, people that have scientific backgrounds. They're, they come at a cost. But isn't that important? This council today is going to look at bond issues. They're going to look at development. But isn't our water and our soil important? Okay, I, I just, I don't understand why things are buried, literally, and we just don't look at things. This is very important. I don't think we want to be known as the city that, that just pushed that down the road. We want people to come to our city. That's what this meeting about is today, getting people to come to our city. Well, let's be proactive. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Donna. And I would just say, all valid questions. I can't answer all of them, but I hope we can.
I think we, I think we can, to all your questions. Herman, ADAM is taking care of that, right?
Well, we, we are working with ADAM. Yes, they're, they're, there's a consent order that they're following, and 3M has guidelines, and ADAM, and they're monitoring it, so yes.
So all your questions.
That's a, they do have the people she's describing as far as consultants and professionals. Decatur Utilities is looking at the water, monitoring that, so yes, we feel like we're doing an effective job of.
One of the questions was around reports from the monitoring being available. Let's answer that.
We'll have to look into that one. I don't know exactly.
Okay, that's, that's the one.
ADAM would issue the reports.
I don't want to give them a half answer, because I don't know. It may be more, makes me not know.
And I saw Pat walk in. Is there a certain agenda item, or do you?
Yeah, both the riverfront and the.
Okay, then we'll wait until that, if that's okay. She just was giving public comment, yeah. All right, we will move into the agenda, and Pat, don't let me forget you. I'm going to write you down, but. All right, first is approval of minutes, and we'll take both of these together.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Pepper, second from Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Minutes are approved with a vote of five to zero. Next, we have approved monthly bills, and we will take check eight two 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 separately from the rest. First, we'll take that specific check number. Motion by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, check eight two 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 is approved four to one, and then the rest of the March twenty-three bills.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Those are approved five to zero. All right, public hearings, Resolution twenty-three zero eight seven, approved request for special event retail liquor license for the Alabama Center for the Arts Foundation for Strolling Through the Arts on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three from WIT LLC doing businesses JW Steakhouse at one thirty-three Second Avenue Northeast, Decatur, Alabama.
We recommend approval on this.
All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on this item, you can speak now. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero eight seven is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero eight eight, approved request for special event retail liquor license by WIT LLC doing businesses JW Steakhouse for Decatur Morgan Foundation Dragon Boat Race on May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, located at twenty-nine oh one Point Mallard Circle Southeast, Decatur, Alabama, three five six zero one.
We recommend approval on this.
All right, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing now. If there's anyone here to speak. Seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero eight eight is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero eight nine, approved request for special event retail liquor license by WIT LLC doing businesses JW Steakhouse for Danae and Blanc for June tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
We recommend approval on this.
Open a public hearing if there's anyone here to speak. All right, seeing no one here to speak, we'll consider the public hearing closed.
So moved.
Second motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero eight nine is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine zero, approved purchase of additional garbage carts for solid waste.
Evening, Council. Kyle Demester, Finance Department. This resolution is for the purchase of eight hundred additional garbage carts for the solid waste department.
How much is that going to cost?
The cost is forty-eight nine eleven.
So moved. Second motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero nine zero is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine one, accept CLG Alabama Historical Commission grant for Old State Bank Historic Structures Report.
Yes, Council Mayor, the Palan Stover Community Development Manager. This is a grant to do a historic structures report for the old bank. As we talked about a couple of months ago, we saw some cracks in the building and closed the second floor off, and hopefully this structures report will, and this is the grant. The next item on the agenda is actually to hire the consultant, but this is the twelve thousand dollar grant to help offset some of the cost for the consultant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero nine one is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine two, approve Lord, AIC, and Sergeant to perform historic structure report on the Old State Bank.
Again, this, this is just the consultant to do the report, and this will get both the structure, electrical plumbing, fire suppression. It'll get the whole building at seventy thousand five hundred.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero nine two is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine four, approved twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four CDBG action plan.
Yes, this is the City of Decatur's annual community development block grant allocation that we get from HUD, the appropriation. This year, the, the total amount that we're, we'll receive is four hundred and thirteen thousand three seventeen. We've had a couple of public hearings. We've also had it out for public comments for the past thirty days. We've had no responses from the community. If you'd like, I can go through some of the projects, if you'd like me to. Twenty percent of that four thirteen three seventeen can go toward public admin, our program administration. So we also have public services projects that we do for public service providers throughout the city, including what we do for Turner Searls, as well as the Decatur Youth Services. We will do down payment assistance for first-time homebuyers. We will have a, some rehab, single-family owner-occupied rehabs that we will do in partnership with Capna, and then the main project that we've got this year will be the Everday Sunshine Park. Hundred, almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll put toward that project. So hopefully, we'll see.
So moved.
Moving there.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero nine four is approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution, thanks, Alan, twenty-three zero nine four, accept National Park Services grant for African-American and women's historic context statement.
Caroline Swob, Community Development. This is a grant offered by the National Park Service to update existing national register nominations to bring contact studies for communities that have under, been underrepresented in their database. So for Decatur specifically, it's for African-American and for women's context studies. So that might be updating Carolyn Courtney Smith's information with Delano Park. It might be updating some of the information with Old Town East and West districts. We are one of ten municipalities in the U.S. to receive this award, so we are thrilled.
So moved. Second motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero nine four is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine five, approve revised Aldott City Agreement Lighting Project, SR twenty, U.S. thirty-one.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Few minutes ago, y'all approved these same or the same agreement. The form got updated, so I'm bringing the updated form to y'all for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three zero nine five is approved four to one. Resolution twenty-three zero nine six, approve budget amendment for Dyken Amphitheater at Founder's Park Outdoor Lighting Sound System and Sound System.
Morning, Greg Smith, Chris Kemp, Tuney Lighting and Sound Designs. For the proposal for outdoor lighting and sound system at Founder's Park Dyken Amphitheater, total cost hundred and fifty thousand.
And can somebody remind me of the the grant that we're using or the?
The Dyken donation is at one forty-two five?
Seventy-five hundred out of city's cost, out of unassigned balance. All right, then we have a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pike. Second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion?
Yeah, I've got just a few questions for you guys. Over the weekend, I had a call just regarding this project. If you guys could walk us a little bit through it, you know, some of the speaker equipment. One of the questions was the height, just ensuring that we're not getting bad feedback or the sound quality is there. In your proposal, you talked about fifteen hundred people. I think that's very feasible for that location, but just make sure that the sound is adequate. Is that, can y'all kind of talk through the height and how you come up with that a little bit?
Well, you know, as far as like the height, you know, I've been running most of the shows there at the amphitheater, and it we've been using the Parks and Rec system, which is basically a hodgepodge of speakers. With the height that we're actually looking at, it's going to be even higher than what we have for the Parks and Rec, and I think we've had up to a thousand people close to, and people could actually hear the system just the way that it is. With it being a little bit higher, it's going to be better for the feedback purposes. You have a thing that's called ringing out the system, and we're going to ring out all the speakers there, so it takes away any feedback. And also, the system is designed for just anybody can go up and actually play with it with an iPad.
Yeah, that was my that was going to be my other question was easy use. You know, we're talking about smaller acts or, you know, smaller theater companies, et cetera. So people would be able to have a common understanding of this type of equipment to show up and be able to.
Yes, one hundred percent.
Okay.
All right, and go ahead, Mayor.
Well, the Belcro Pygmies were here Saturday. It's an event that the Career Academy puts on students from Austin and Decatur High School to learn how to organize and implement an event like that, and they did a fabulous job. But they they have expenses. They had to bring a stage in with sound and lighting. If they were to want to go to the amphitheater and do something like that, it'd be perfect for it, wouldn't it?
It would. I actually brought, if you guys want to see rider contracts from shows that I've done in the past, I've got Ricky Skaggs here. And then I've also got the Marshall Tucker Band. Now, anything that was confidential, I've actually taken out of these contracts, but you can kind of see what they're asking for. If you look at the very last page of Ricky Skaggs, you'll see something that's called an input list and a stage spot. And all the other proposals that I saw, it didn't have any microphones, it didn't have any mixing consoles, it didn't even have any stands in the proposal. In our proposal, Ricky Skaggs, if he wanted to, could actually show up to the amphitheater with all the equipment that we're proposing and actually run a show. And the same thing with the Marshall Tucker Band. So I've tried to make it to where it's industry standard for the amphitheater. So, yes, if the pygmies wanted to come out, they could just use just the equipment that's there instead of having to spend five thousand dollars for rentals.
Thank you.
One other one other question on the light tower. What's the height of those? Do you know? I can't remember what that would roughly be.
The light tower out in the.
Yeah, out in the park.
Would be roughly sixteen feet.
Will they be painted or? I'm just thinking aesthetically.
It'd be painted the same color as the the metal that's on the amphitheater.
And we should probably look at maybe doing some landscaping around the bottom of that, dress it up some.
Kyle, we are about to go into mid-year. Is there a reason that we didn't just address this at mid-year and and we're doing it now?
I think the reason for doing it now is to kind of get ahead of the season that's approaching, and, you know, I think we have an act happening out there tonight even. So I know they have a delivery date or the delivery is.
Six weeks.
Six weeks, so I think there could be some acts this summer that the citizens will get to benefit from the new sound system. So if we wait till mid-year, you're looking at another two more meetings until I come with that ask, so another month.
And this is coming at seventy-five hundred dollars out of.
Correct.
Okay.
With a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars from.
I understand that.
Dyken.
Thank you.
And, you know, the act tonight, I'm going to be running the sound of the hodgepodge of speakers that we usually. So this system that I designed is something that I would personally want to use for the
All right, thanks, guys. Any other discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero nine six, approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine seven, award bid number twenty-three zero one one R for concrete labor and equipment to S.J. and L. LLC.
Good morning, Jeremy Sherrill, procurement agent for the City of Decatur. This is a resolution to award the bid for concrete and labor, concrete labor and equipment. This is an annual bid that we send out, and this one went out to fourteen contractors. We received two responses, and the lowest responsible bidder should be awarded to S.J. and L. LLC.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero nine seven, approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine eight, award bid number twenty-three zero one three R for alternative daily cover material at landfill to L.S.C.
Yes, so this is a cellulose material that it's mandated by permit, and it serves to control disease vectors, suppress fires, minimize odor, hinder scavengers, and eliminate blowing litter. And this went out to eight vendors. We received two responses, and the lowest responsible bidder being L.S.C.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I might just overlook this, but is there a a timeframe on that? I mean, we put it out there, and it does all the things that you say that it does, but do we have to replenish it every so often to?
Spray it every day.
I mean, is that continual that?
Yes.
Forever?
Yeah, what we do, we use this on a daily basis. You know, we're only mandated to use soil at the end of the week after after our operations for the end of the week. This we use every day. So it's a clay that we spray over the garbage to control what he mentioned, the smells, the vectors, and things like that. And it's when it's covered, the it doesn't look like open garbage or trash. It looks like a brown layer.
So we'll do this every day until we actually close the cell?
Right, until we close the for that week.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero nine eight, approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three zero nine nine, approve untie fiber, Southern Light Fiber Optic Expansion.
Yeah, this this company already has a franchise from the city that was granted several years ago. This just approves an additional route from downtown out toward Dollar General area. And it goes, some of it's aerial, some of it's underground. They'll have to get permission from Decatur Utilities and others for the aerial portion, but this just allows them to form another route and provide more service in Decatur and downtown Decatur especially.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three zero nine nine is approved five to zero. Resolution twenty-three one hundred, approved memorandum of understanding with Decatur Utilities regarding cost sharing for Church Street Waterline relocation.
Carl would agree with this. Basically, there's a grant for this particular project. The city's got ten percent of that match. Decatur Utilities has got the other ten percent. It comes out to fifty-something thousand dollars. Basically, the bid was a little higher than anticipated, so this way, they have agreed and we've agreed that the amount should be increased from each of us. So that's what this does.
So moved.
Carl is moving towards the podium, but you were just so swift.
Well, he can do the next one.
Motion by Mr. McMasters, second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion? Roll call. Aye. Aye. Jackson.
Aye.
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 Resolution twenty-three one hundred is approved five to zero. Next is resolution twenty-three one zero one, approve Ingles Harbor LLC project proposal, project development agreement, and ground lease and start process.
All right. Of course, this this was shared at the work session. There was a notice, as we've already stated, it was put in the newspaper outlining this particular projected project. It was on April the seventh. The purpose of today's meeting is to have what's called a public meeting under the law. Section seven seven two of the state constitution, also known as ninety-four point oh one of the state constitution, authorizes cities to invest in economic and retail and commercial projects if they find a public benefit and a public purpose in those investments of city funds, even though it may and does benefit a private entity. And that's been in place. It requires notice of that. Certainly, I understand there's some people here that want to speak toward it, and that will be good. But here's a general outline. Excuse me for being redundant, but we that's the purpose of this meeting, so the people who are here can hear it. Basically, this agreement involves the City of Decatur, and from here on out, I'm going to call us the city, and then Ingles Harbor LLC, which is a limited liability company with a sole managing member being Patrick Lawler, who is also here. From here on, I'm going to call them company, just to keep from having to use all the words. So this projected project involves what's called a development agreement, and it also involves a ground lease if the development agreement moves forward. The city is being asked to provide some inducements. Of course, the the company will provide inducements in return for that. It starts out with a hundred and twenty-day due diligence process whereby the developer can examine the land, evaluate what's there. Also, during that time, come back with a suggested development plan, which they have a hundred and twenty days to do that. Then it comes to the city council and city staff to review it. The city has up to ninety days to respond to that proposed development plan. If there's items need to be revised, and they're sent back to the company, and then they have ninety days to develop the plan. The reason from the city's standpoint, it involves ninety days is because it goes before the city planning commission and other bodies to review it because it involves streets, how how the project accesses those. It involves parking lots, landscaping, all kinds of different items that it's important for all of us to have a chance to review. And then, once it comes back to the city, if there is advisements needed, we have an additional ninety days. Once that process is finished, then we move forward with the company beginning the project. Once they've got to get T.V.A. approvals and Corps of Engineer approvals and those kind of things. But this this is the beginning of the process if y'all choose to move forward.
So moved.
Well.
Oh, sorry.
I'm a little, you're a little early, but I do appreciate that conversation. All right, the the project involves five, starting out five point two six eight acres, which is what the development would be put on. In addition to that, we would have, it would be two approximately two acres of land that Decatur Utilities owns presently that we would acquire through some source to be determined. The exact description of that land is still being determined. T.V.A. has to have an input with that.
We and we really don't know the size.
That's right. It's approximately two acres, yes. That's right. All right. So it involves if we move forward, there's a there's a ground lease that will become part of the development agreement. It could be up to ninety-nine years. So it starts out with a forty-four-year term, and then it can be renewed for another twenty years, and then it can be renewed for another twenty years, and then if they so choose, the company so chooses, an additional nineteen years. But in no wise would it be more than ninety-nine years. All right? All right, so we get to the part of the inducements, and I will share that with you. The basically, we've already shared about the two acres of land with Decatur Utilities, and then in addition to that, the city would lease the ninety-nine-year term. We've shared that. In addition to those, the city would expend one point five million dollars in public improvements, which would also benefit private, be a public-private option. City would be responsible to have utilities brought to within five feet of each of the subtenant property lines, and then on the Decatur Utilities property, it would be brought to a location on the property line chosen by the company. All right, in in order for it to move to the ground lease process, there's four items that would be involved. The first item is the development plan has to be agreed to and finalized. The second one is the T.V.A. and other governmental entities have to give their approval. The third item is the developer would bring forth how the company anticipates financing it, including what they're going to put in it, plus how they're going to get the financing otherwise needed. And the fourth item is they would, at that point, would show final final financing commitment from whoever they're borrowing the money from. We need to see that they have permanent financing involved. Obviously, there would be leasehold mortgage at that point, entered into. In addition to that, they would have the ability, once the initial project is finished, to sublease the property to either a retailer, restaurant, any commercial, they would have that. They could not do that until the initial construction is finished. Once the initial construction is finished, they can basically convey their interest to other entities. One of the guidelines is that whoever, whatever entity comes forth to do that has to agree to the same terms that's already here, plus has to have a net worth of at least five million dollars. And that's that's a nutshell of the project, because we can answer questions. Now, I guess it's time for the public meeting.
Okay, thanks, Herman. This is a public meeting, hearing. It's a different wording in this particular issue, but I'll open the floor now for anyone that wants to speak on this. And really, I didn't have any make sign in, but I know Pat wanted to speak, and I'll let you go first, and then anybody that wants to follow. And we will stick to three minutes like we always do.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council, city staff, community at large. Pat Underwood, longtime resident of Twelfth and Terror Hall, currently residing. Tarahaw, currently residing at the Point Mallard Campground Firework Circle. So I'm here this morning, like I've said before, there can't be an Iron Bowl without an opposing team. I first, foremost, support this development. I think this is something that would be good for the community. But, like I said, we've got to have some opposing views here. One of my part-time jobs is working with Osprey Initiative. They've got a contract with the city of Decatur for litter traps. I'm on the front lines of escaped trash within our community, and seeing what I've seen, our community has a bit of a litter problem. We've been putting effort and budget towards mitigating that issue, but this development will be on the river. So my question is, how will this development, how will the tenants in this development prevent escaped trash from entering directly into the Tennessee River? I know our city leadership is not going to take on an issue like banning styrofoam cups within the city limits or single-use plastic bags. You know, we had that go around. So that would be my first question is, how are we, the citizens with our track record of, you know, anytime a Whataburger opens up in town, I see a Whataburger cup in the Osprey trap. When a Buc-E's opens in Athens, Alabama, I see Buc-E's cups in the litter trap on Dry Branch Creek and by Wilson Morgan. So that's my first point of light. Second, we, the city, are giving the company the rights to use Ingalls, the namesake, Ingalls Harbor LLC. Would we allow a developer to come into Wilson Morgan and set up shop under Wilson Morgan LLC? Or would the TBA allow someone, a developer, to come into Point Mallard and use the name Point Mallard LLC? So what's the history behind Ingalls Harbor? What's the namesake to say the John Cook, Raymond Daniels, I can't remember the other two names, in the Chamber of Commerce award? You know, we pride ourselves on the history of, you know, namesake here in our town. So what's the history, and how will this development continue to capitalize or bring to light that history of Ingalls? Because I don't even know the history of Ingalls. So that's my two points there. And then, third, I know Decatur Utilities has done their due due diligence to make sure there's no smells going on at this potential development, but why do we continue to spend money on the back end and not on the front end of our drinking water in our community? This development, Mr. Lawler, will be using city water. Thank you for your time.
Finish your point.
Will be using city water, and have you done your due diligence on the severity of forever chemicals in our watershed, which will be right in line with the water that all those businesses will be using at that development? I just want to thank the city council, Mr. Mayor, all the city staff for everything you do for the community. I love Decatur with all my heart, and this is Trash Ninja signing off. I've taken a contract with Feld Entertainment, and I'm running away to join the circus. Love you guys.
Do you still want to speak on the bond?
Is that today?
Potentially could be, so I just want to give you the opportunity to do that.
I agree with my voice, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Anyone else? Ray, did you want to go ahead, or?
I'll be glad to.
Okay. Let Ray go ahead. I know for two things, well, really, one, we had some questions last week about the plant expansion.
Yeah.
And then anything else you want to touch on, since it obviously includes you guys?
So Ray Harden with Decatur Utilities. I'll address two questions. One, I did have the chance to watch last week's work session, and so I wanted to address Councilman Jackson's concerns about property. One of the things we have done over the last year as part of another project, the design work that's ongoing with plant upgrades, is look at the extents of the property within the fence of the wastewater treatment plant and what upgrades we have room for. And we've done a lot of work to contemplate the future expansions within that fence line. And so one of the things I wanted to express is that we have significant ability to expand our treatment capabilities within the current property lines, the current fence line of our facility. And we've looked at multiple options for regulations that we know are coming in the next couple of years with changes in our permit, and then contemplated other future regulations that we hear about, but we don't have any timelines on. So we're comfortable within the current fence line of the property.
Can I?
Sure.
And that would be whether this development is coming or not?
Right. That work began last year, independent of this discussion, because we needed to look at the project that's about to happen is going to significantly expand the capacity of the front part of the treatment plant, and we needed to look at elevations and other aspects of the rest of the property to be able to see what capable, what we're capable of doing downstream of that at the back of the treatment plant. So we've got, that work is ongoing, and that project will be the first quarter of next year, and it'll be a big construction project for the plant. It'll add capacity primarily aimed at reducing sanitary sewer overflows, which we've talked about before. This year, I'm proud to report, for the first time in over twenty years, Decatur has not experienced any rain-induced sanitary sewer overflows. I think that's directly related to the rehab improvements that are being worked on, and it was a little bit of a drier winter. But so that's related to this project. There was a question about.
Before you move on, you say that we have, that you have confidence that we can expand within the boundaries of the fence. Can we definitively say that we won't need this property in the future? You can definitively give us.
I don't have a crystal ball, Councilman. I don't have a knowledge of what could happen in twenty or thirty years, but everything we can see in the next ten-to-twenty-year timing, planning horizon for regulatory changes and the growth that we expect within the footprint that we serve, we can serve it within our current footprint.
I've had extensive conversations with David Parks regarding this, and he had just said that when he actually convinced, and he changed it. He said he convinced George Godwin to look at purchasing this property, and then he came back and he said, "Well, I really didn't have to convince him, because this was something that we both agreed on." And they looked out beyond, like, the next fifty, sixty years, that there's a potential that we would need that. And so that was why they decided to do it. They went to their board. The board decided that that was a good and feasible expectation, and then they brought it to the council, and we approved them doing it. And, but it was all about the fact that they felt that in the future that there would be a need for expansion. As our city grew, that we would need to expand. So I guess it's kind of interesting that, you know, that we say that we can't, you know, we can work within the confines of the fenced area right now, but we can't definitively say. And I understand that nobody can definitively say what's going to happen in the next twenty years, but this was bought for that specific purpose, to make sure that we had that ground and we had that land so that when that time did come and we did grow and expand as a city, that we would be able to accommodate that. So that's my concern. Well, that's one of my concerns with this.
Well, and I don't disagree with your point. That was well over twenty-five years ago, and as time has gone, that capacity has not been needed.
Has technology changed?
And technology has changed to change the footprint of the treatment needs that would be there in the future, so.
I fully understand that, again, but I've heard people say that, regarding Kerry Matthews, we can't guarantee that the floor is going to stand there for the next thirty years. I've heard things like that, and then, but it's okay that we can say that we don't need this now, but there's a potential that we need, we might need it in the future. And so it's there, and that, this land was bought specifically for that. So I understand the development of new technology. I fully understand that. But I do know that the EPA changes their guidelines, and you're aware of that, and that in the future that we might have to change our guidelines and expand that area. So I just, I have grave concerns about that.
And I'll share too. Ray, you and I talked about this exact topic, and I asked the question, in fifty years, what if we have a hundred-and-thousand-plus residents, and, you know, we've discussed across the river growth, but on this side, and you, you're going to need more than that. I mean, so the plan would be having a whole different conversation about how you expand, not even in the current location.
Yeah. You know, the current location certainly has its limits as far as what it could treat ultimately. But if the city grew beyond that, then we would be looking at treatment facilities in other locations, whether it's across the river or in other locations on the south side of the river. So that's decades away, I would say five decades at least.
It might be, but, you know, that was a whopper of growth when we jumped from where we are now to a hundred thousand dollars, but incrementally, if we grow between there, that land would probably accommodate what we need.
Can you talk through the volume currently that you see, and then what the plans that the consultant for the project has given you, what that would get to?
Well, there's.
I don't know if you can answer that.
This gets pretty technical, because we look at daily routine volume, and then we look at peak volumes when we have big rain events. As much as we will try, over the next ten years, to tighten up the wastewater system, when it rains, water gets into the system. And so we have to plan for those peak flows when big rain events happen. And so we have contemplated peak flows to be able to generate, to be able to treat a hundred-and-twenty million gallons per day. Today's treatment capacity is, the plant is rated at thirty-six MGD. So we can, we can treat a lot more water on a peak basis. One day, we may have to go to the ATM and ask for our plant capacity to be upgraded above thirty-six, what it is today, but we're nowhere close to that. Our typical daily flow is in the eighteen-to-twenty range. So, but before I forget, I wanted to address another question that came up earlier regarding PFAS. You mentioned EPA promulgates regulations. Most people are aware that EPA has proposed draft regulations for certain PFAS chemicals in drinking water. Those draft numbers, MCL is four parts per trillion, PFOA and PFOS, then there's a number of other chemicals. That's something that we've been tracking in the raw water that comes into the drinking water plant. And so one of the things, I want to be sure that the public and the media understands is we're talking about two different things. Wastewater treatment is what we're talking about on the development property. Drinking water is done at another plant upstream of that. So last year, in an effort to get ahead of those regulations, we hired Jacobs Engineering to do a pretty extensive treatability study. That's been going on now for several months. They'll do pilot, they'll do bench scale testing, then they'll do pilot testing of different technologies so that we'll know what we need to invest in to be sure we can comply with all those new regulations. So that work is ongoing. We report that, those numbers, those concentrations quarterly to ATM as part of our permit, and that information is public, so.
All right, thanks, Ray. Yes, sir.
Yeah. I left one item out of the inducements. It's very important. We've shared it before. There would be a revenue sharing plan whereby when tax, use tax, sales tax are generated from that property, we're talking about new businesses, not businesses already in Decatur. Then the company would receive twenty-five percent of those newly generated taxes, so that's another thing. And then it's one-point-five million dollar total is the maximum amount, and that would be, the term of that would be no more than ten years. So in other words, once we get to the one-point-five, it ends. But if we get to ten years, which the company and the city hope does not take ten years, it should not, but that would be the maximum time for that. So it'd be another revenue sharing, one-point-five, that would come out of funds that are generating, not something we have to advance. We pay it after those taxes are collected. Thank you. I apologize. In my haste to condense it, I condensed that one item. I didn't mean to condense. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, if not, I'll consider that portion of the hearing meeting closed, and we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. Any discussion?
I obviously have several concerns over this. The wastewater treatment plant is a huge concern. But, you know, when we dealt with developments in the past, and we've dealt with many, we dealt with, I don't know, four, five, or six on the Highway Twenty corridor. We've dealt with the Target development. And each of those have taken literally months to get to where we are now. And essentially, we've been discussing this for, what, three weeks now? And it's like we're on a light speed pace to move this thing through. This might be a really good project. I think that we're moving really, really fast through this, and I think that we need to, it's one of those projects where we need to slow down, do our due diligence, make sure that this is a good project for both sides. And so that is what concerns me more than anything else. It's the amount of speed that we're rushing through this. And I'm sure that others will say that we're not rushing through this, but I've been through projects where we've taken months, literally, and some of those have turned out to be good, and some of those we found out weren't feasible. So that's really my greatest concern, is the amount of speed that we're rushing through this with.
All right, thanks, Mr. Jackson. And any other discussion?
I'd just like to, Herman, thank you. You just stood up there and went through a fifty-eight-page legal document barely without looking at it once. I think you are to be commended for that. You have been being able to be available to us, once we've had the document in front of us. I just appreciate the work you've put into it, and I think you should be commended for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tell me to thank. Attorneys always say, "One more thing," and I want to try to limit it. No, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Lawler. He made the attorneys that represent him available to us, and we appreciate that he was available. This project has taken several months to come to fruition, to bring it to y'all. I want to also thank the legal staff. Without them, we would not have gotten to this. Ruth and Chip have been very helpful. Others have been most helpful, and I don't want to go much further because I'll leave somebody out, but I needed to share that your legal team worked very diligently with Mr. Lawler and his attorneys, and bring you a project that we think has some merit that y'all need to consider. I don't, somehow I don't feel like we've rushed through this. I'm sorry. I really don't.
I'm just going to add a comment in there. I've seen people all over social media all the time say that we never take advantage of our riverfront, and now that an opportunity has been put in front of us to take advantage of our riverfront and actually produce business there, this is a great opportunity. And I just thank Mr. Lawler for putting this project in front of us and be willing to bring it to the city of Decatur. This is going to be a great, great move for the city of Decatur.
Yeah. I think I've probably heard more, even if we just say over the last three weeks, I've probably heard more about this development than almost anything else our turn, in terms of the excitement, what this is going to provide for Decatur, so in the whole region. I think it'll be a regional draw. My family, we've gone to Gunnersville to it, and you're talking about nearly an hour drive. So if you look at that around Decatur, I think it'll be bringing a lot of people. So thanks for you, Mr. Lawler, for doing this. I'd also like to thank the mayor, the council president. I know both of you worked really hard on this, Herman as well, and some others. I appreciate the work y'all put in to get us to this point, and with that, I'm ready to vote.
I think this is something, at the end of the day, I've never been more with community feedback, that this is something our citizens want, and Mr. Lawler, thank you.
And I think it's been talked about for decades.
I'll say a couple of things. I did want to thank Ray and Decatur Utilities first, because riverfront development is something that, I mean, I think in one Decatur, you know, if you look at what our citizens asked for, one was clean up Sixth Avenue, and one of the other big ones was we wanted to have something, a development on the river. I think those are overwhelming things that our citizens want. So I want to thank the U for being able to work with us around the confines of your wastewater plant. It happens to be right next to one of the last pieces of kind of prime riverfront property that we have, so I do appreciate the work. So I do appreciate the willingness to look at ways that we can say yes, and there are some ways we can't say yes. I mean, there's some aspects of that we wouldn't be able to, but thank you guys for being willing to work with us on that. I really appreciate that. The other thing I would say is, I don't have to be careful in how I say this, I guess, but we get a lot of developers to come through and want to talk and meet and talk about grand plans, and I would put them in three buckets. One, I would say maybe are yahoos. They're idiots. They don't, they don't have any idea what they're doing. They've never done it. And some of them are borderline criminals in my, in my point. And I will gladly share any of this information that I'm talking about, but if you have specific questions. The second one is, the second bucket is people that have really good ideas, they've probably done some development, and I want to hear from those people, but they don't have the balance sheet. So you hear a great idea in a great spot, and then they go, "And now I'm going to go find some investors." And I'm going, "Okay, that's where we are." So those don't really come to fruition a lot, because it's hard to find, you know, in this case, 30-plus million dollars to be invested. So the second bucket's okay, but what we really like is the other, the last bucket. And that is a developer that's done it over a long period of time, and this one happens to be an hour down the road that we can actually go touch and see and feel, and has been successful over a long career of development, whether that be residential, commercial, and now a riverfront development. And then you can talk to those city leaders in that town and go, "Hey, what was that guy like to deal with?" And they go, "A-plus, moves really fast, buckle your seatbelt, but he's going to produce a great product that's good for your city." So when you find somebody that's done it, and then they can, they have the balance sheet, they can go do it. There's just not that many people that can do that. It's a very small bucket, and we're, it's a good thing when somebody like that comes to Decatur, and we need to jump on those opportunities. And that's what we have here, is a really good opportunity to get something done for our citizens. And again, I think when you look at something like One Decatur, feedback we get, this is what our citizens want. We do have a responsibility to make sure it's a good deal for both sides. I think this is a good deal. And we have a responsibility to make sure, a lot of what Mr. Jackson's questions were about the footprint and potential growth, I think that's our responsibility to consider absolutely. I personally feel comfortable with the answers that we've been given on that. So obviously, I will support it. One other item, this came from, I think the mayor mentioned this maybe in the paper, but we have a citizen, and we need to call him by name, Ray Glaze, who had a connection to some, I think a family member went to City Harbor and met Mr. Lawler, and they said, "We need one of these in Decatur." And he sent us a message, I think, "Crystal, you might have been on that, the mayor, I was on it," and said, "Hey, this guy needs to come to Decatur." And the mayor got his contact information, and that took a long time from that point to today, but that's where this started, and Ray deserves credit for just being a citizen that loves Decatur and wants to see us grow and be successful, see an opportunity and pass it along, and then all of a sudden, here we are today.
That's speed of rock.
Yeah. The last thing I'll say, is that Wally? The last thing I'll say is, there's still work to be done. So we're voting on a potential package. We still need to make sure that the development plan is right. We have to get legal description of property that DU has to get to make sure everything can fit how it needs to fit. And then there's permitting with TBA, which Mr. Lawler's done. Again, he has the experience to do that, has done it, but there are some hurdles. And I think if you think back to, you know, Sweetwater Project was bought up. First off, it's different in that we were dealing with somebody else's property out there. This is city property we're dealing with. The other is what I just mentioned about the developer. But we were at this point, the city was, with the Sweetwater development. This incentive package was voted on and approved, and it's not out there, as y'all know. So tempered expectations, I'm very confident this will get done, but just, there's still work to be done. You know that, we all know that, but we expect to get it done. So I'm not going to be jumping and skipping out yet. I will when the shovel goes in the dirt.
Let's back up one second there. Sweetwater was not our property, but Wilson Morgan was our property. And Herman, you remember that, the first proposal, one of the first proposals for the Target Center was Wilson Morgan. So yes, we dealt with property that was ours before.
Yeah, what part of Wilson Morgan is that's dedicated is supposed to park.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying. When it came to us, we spent quite a bit of time, we had meetings on the seventh floor, we spent an enormous amount of time looking at all of the issues, Wilson Morgan and every other thing that was presented. So it was, we've had those situations come before, so it's, yeah.
I don't disagree with that. You're correct.
Okay.
The citizens didn't want that in a public park. That's right.
And I'm, okay.
All right, I'm done. Any other discussion? All right, do have a motion by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. Pike. Any other discussion? Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 23101 is approved four to one. Now we get to talk about an above-ground fuel storage tank. Resolution 23102 approved proposal of upgrade to above-ground fuel storage tank at golf course.
Council Mayor Stephanie McLean, Point Miller Park. I think, well, last week Bradley Murphy came and spoke about some of the needed upgrades for this fuel storage tank. As I spoke last week, one of our pumps is not operating at this time, and we do feel like, that's the diesel pump, we do feel like the other pump has the potential to not work as well, so.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pepper.
Second.
Second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call? Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution 23102 is approved five to zero. Next is ordinance, ordinance is first reading. Ordinance 234552 approve FY '24 ad valorem tax levy. Any questions? It's not a, not an additional. All right, ordinance 234553 declare surplus city land to be used for proposed Ingalls Harbor LLC proposed project.
If you lease it, let me move. Whether you sell it or lease it on a long term, you have to declare the property not needed for municipal purposes. So that's what we have here, is the ordinance on this property that's being considered for the development agreement and the ground lease. It involves passing an ordinance, it just does what I just said, it's not needed for municipal purposes. We would ask that you consider double voting, that so we can go ahead, now that you voted for the agreement, to go ahead and pass the ordinance.
I'll make a motion for immediate consideration.
Second. All right, we have a motion for immediate consideration by Mr. Pepper, second by Mr. McMasters. Any discussion? Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
No. Aye.
All right, that ordinance, the immediate consideration fails four to one. So that's still first reading. Ordinance 234554 approve general obligations warrant series 2023.
Yeah, I won't go into my whole spiel I gave at the work session last week, but I kind of go over, summarize, it's kind of like Herman did. What we have before you today is a $35 million borrow, 25-year amortization. The all-in interest rate came in at 3.86, which we're extremely pleased with. Their overall use for this funding source will be for the DYS facility, the Wilson Morgan Recreation, and the Sportsplex off notice. Went through the whole process, received two very astounding credit ratings from Moody's and S&amp;P, and we're here today to ask for approval.
There's a bit of a desire for immediate consideration on this one as well, isn't it? Isn't there?
Yes.
I'll move for immediate consideration.
We have a motion by Mr. McMasters for immediate consideration. Second by Mr. Pepper. Any discussion? Roll call? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye. All right, immediate consideration fails with a vote of four to one. We will look at potentially having a special call meeting for both of those items, and I'll get with Stephanie to send the notice out. All right, next council work session will be held on April 24th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m., and the next regular council meeting will be held on May 1st, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. City staff, managers, directors, anything to add? Mayor?
Again, just very thankful for the council's fine favor for the Lawler development. Patrick, thank you for investing in our city. You've been a joy to work with, and like was mentioned, they say now that to hold on, this is when you get going. So we're excited about that. And then this Wednesday, we will have a State of the City address sponsored by our Chamber of Commerce at the Doubletree Hotel. We'll have a, I'll be joined by council president and Councilman Pike, and we'll take questions from Wade Weaver. That'd be a first, so look forward to that. Hope you'll come out.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Anything else from council? All right, we'll stay in adjourned.